Good morning and welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today's Tuesday, July the ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is ten a.m. and we have four members of Commissioners Court present. Commissioner Kirkendall will be absent today. This meeting is hereby called by order. Please write in invitation. Mr. Cook will deliver the invitation and lead us into pledge.
Good heavens, Father. Thank you for all the many blessings that you've given us. Please watch over us today as we conduct the business of the county. I ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is to consider and possibly approve the June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four regular minimum is presented by the county clerk.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number four, consider approval of request to cancel law registration claim from June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and approval of today's cash statement presented by the county treasurer, Mrs. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, five hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents. On our cash report summary and general checking account, we have one million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars and twelve cents. First Financial Bank General Checking Special Money Market, twenty-four million, five hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred six dollars and thirty-one cents. Tex School General, three hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-seven cents for a total in cash funds of twenty-six million, seventy-four thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. I'm to approve this.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Number four. That was number four. Number five, authorization to pay county bills presented by the county auditor, Mrs. Angela Gore. Good morning.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for June the twenty-sixth through the twenty-seventh is nine hundred seventy thousand, five hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Pre-approved expenditures for July the second through the third is forty-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars and three cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today are one hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and fifty-three cents. For a total expenditures and transfers of one million, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars and nineteen cents. Gross payroll for June the twenty-seventh was six hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. The total transfers for that payroll was one million, seventy-one thousand, ninety-six dollars and seventy-one cents. A revised payroll, a reissued payroll check on June the twenty-seventh, the gross amount was one thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and the total transfers for that pay paycheck was two thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-five cents.
Please play bill.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gore.
Thank you.
Number six, consider approval of request by Miss Sharon Whitley, Health Director, to authorize the county judge to sign outdoor advertising contract renewal with John Cannon Incorporated for Harden County Women Infant and Children's Billboard Advertising. This will be funded one hundred percent utilizing grant funds. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, consider approval of request by Miss Whitley to authorize the county judge to execute a lease agreement renewal between Badger's Hospitals of Southeast Texas and Harden County for lease office space located at six oh three F and four eighteen West Suite G two. I'm sorry, it's G four. Philly, Texas, also funded one hundred percent by grant funds.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Ms. Jones, is this just a renewal for another year?
Yes, sir.
Any other changes to that contract?
No, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eight, consider approval of request by Miss Whitley to authorize the county judge to execute professional services contract renewal between Harden County on behalf of Women Infant and Children's Division and Michelle Miller to provide nutrition counseling services effective August first, two thousand and twenty-four, through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. So moved. Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any changes to that? Just the dates. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, consider approval of request by the Chief Juvenile Probation Officer Monica Kelly for approval of outside detention contract with Wood County. You're just adding another county?
We are.
He's doing such a great job, we just got him wanting to come on in.
Yes, sir. That's what I was gonna say.
All right. Motion was Commissioner Cooper and seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything you want to say?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for not sending Jared. Oh, there he is next to you.
I was just gonna say, I don't think we'll be coming back down for any more contracts because I think we've covered all of them.
We're close.
How many does that, how many counties is that?
Twenty-five. Actually, Wood County is about three and a half hours away. It's north of Tyler. They may and may never use us. They may have to use us. They're just, the larger facilities are staying full pretty regular, so they're just reaching out to, to any detention center they can get ahold of and they make the trip. If they have to make their half hour trip down here, they will drop the juvenile off. But we're very, uh, we scrutinize the cases coming in to Harden County because I don't want, you know, we don't want trouble.
All right. Thank you. Number ten, consider approval of request by Mrs. Misty Sims' purchasing agent to present results of bids received for overlaying approximately one thousand, four hundred fifty feet on Village Creek Road located in precinct one and possibly award to successful bidder. Good morning.
Good morning. Bids were opened on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four in the purchasing department at two P.M. Pat Boyett and Stacy Eckert were present and received one bid from CMM Construction for three dollars and seventy-five cents. This was a bid.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. Ms. Cooper?
I'm moved to accept the, uh, bid.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to sell a Raobi electric riding lawnmower, serial number ending in zero, 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 eight, utilizing Renee Bates Auctioneers at Reneebates.com.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion?
What does this, where would it come from?
I believe it was seized by Sheriff's Office.
It was where?
Seized by the Sheriff's Office.
Oh, okay, okay.
And it says it's an electric company?
It was found property.
Okay.
It was abandoned, found property. It's actually almost brand new.
Hmm. We'll top it up so we'll get a lot of money for it. Almost brand new, he said.
We think it was stolen, but nobody knows where.
Was that in my precinct?
It was. That's the one. It was actually on county property.
Yeah.
Or the buyouts in Pinewood.
Hmm.
Stashed.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to sell items seized by the sheriff's office, including lawn mowers, lawn equipment, tools, baseball memorabilia, fishing equipment, and other miscellaneous items.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
We do plan to use Renee Bates for that one as well.
Okay, that's fine. Any other discussion? That'll all be on Renee Bates dot com. Sheriff says it's all in great shape, right?
Only, only drove.
Bid high, bid high. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims, purchasing agent, to present results of bids received for a two thousand and six Ford F five fifty cabin chassis Western hauler, bid number ending in six one three six, and a two thousand and seven Ferrari Mobile Command Trailer, bid number ending in seven zero eight eight package, and possibly award to successful bidder and or take further action as the court deems necessary. Ms. Sims?
Bids were opened on July third at two P.M. in the purchasing department. We received two bids. Stacy Eckert, Pat Boyett, and Mike Custer were present. The first one was from Integrated Technology Services for forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and the second one was from Alex Poliakoff. I'm probably not saying that right.
That's how I would say it.
Eight thousand dollars.
Sheriff, is there anything you want to say regarding this, or not say regarding this?
Just, I mean, we're, we're at the, the crossroads of, it's almost twenty years old and the required maintenance to upkeep, the money we spent keeping the truck up and the trailer and lack of, lack of deployments and usability. I just, we're, we're at that point where there's other things that I think would be a lot more beneficial to us user-friendly wise. Unfortunately, having to go about going out for bids and dispersing, I mean, there, you, you have to really toe the line on how you move those assets that were bought with, with FEMA funds back in the day and we just don't have a lot of wiggle room. And unfortunately, it's, we'd love to have more money. We think it should bring more money, but when you look out across the U.S. for those kind of trailers in that shape in that year model, um, they're twenty to forty thousand dollars is what we're seeing them go for. And of course, the truck is a twenty, two thousand and six, so it's an eighteen-year-old truck and it's a good market there, but it's low mileage, but it's also eighteen years old. You know, you're just, we, we all want more money. We'd love to have bids come in higher and unfortunate that we got the bid that we did, but running it again or a fourth or a fifth time, I just don't know that we're gonna get anything else. So, um, I mean, I welcome conversation. Commissioner Cook intimately knows the unit was instrumental in getting it here and probably knows more about it than anybody in the courthouse. I just, I'm afraid we're at a point where we're gonna have to make the decision to either keep it and spend a lot of money year to year to maintain it or go and get something else.
We've tried to sell it twice or three times?
Twice.
This is second time.
Yeah, the first time we got no bids. Well, we followed the purchasing policy and advertised it. Uh, highest bid we got was the, had pleasure of court.
Is that a gas or a diesel?
Diesel.
And I'm assuming, uh, we bought it as a package deal, so we're required to sell it as a package. We, we have, uh, maybe got more selling.
We talked to a few people that seemed to be interested in the, uh, truck more so than the trailer, but just, you know, I had a couple of people say, hey, if I was bidding, I would bid this much and it was nothing like what we're getting now. You know, and they didn't come forward to bid because they had no use for the trailer. And I T S tells us they have a use for the trailer more so, that we're afraid one of them wouldn't sell if we split them up and then we'll be stuck with something. And if we sold the truck and didn't sell the trailer, how would we move the trailer? So.
Well, just like you said, Mike called me last night and said, just looking around at other similar units throughout the nation, this is pretty close or pretty well in length.
And, and I had to propose when I, when I got permission for us to, to get rid of that back through, up the chain through the governor's office and to get permission for us to liquidate that. Um, I gave them supporting documentation of stuff that we had found out for sale. There was liking from terrible. And that bid's not that far off, you know? Uh, my, my recommendation is that we sell, um, with some reservation, you know, and I, I did, I, I wished we could have gotten more, but I don't think holding any longer or doing anything else different is gonna generate us any other money. And so staff recommendation to the court would be that we accept the, the bid.
Sheriff? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper to accept the high bid from I T S. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Sims. Number fourteen, consider approval of request by Mr. Alex Parker, Flood Plane Administrator, to approve replaid of west half of Lot twenty, all of Lot twenty-one. A portion of Lot twenty-two and Lot twenty-three and the lots one through seven, that'd be William Wees subdivision in the day landing cattle surveying, abstract number six oh seven. Harden County, Texas, located in precinct three. Commissioner Young?
I have discussed this with Alex and engineers have approved it. They had a little bit of back and forth, uh, because this is an existing subdivision that they're creating a new subdivision. Um, but everything has been satisfied, so I move to your plate.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to approve. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Consider approval of request by Mr. Alex Parker, Flood Plane Administrator, to purchase a two thousand and twenty-four Chevrolet Silverado, fifteen hundred crew cab, crew cab truck from Lake Country Chevrolet in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars for the Flood Plane Administration Department utilizing a cooperative purchasing program agreement and amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget as follows. Forty-nine thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars out of the contingency general line item or from that line item to fuel and oil in the Flood Plane Department, seven hundred fifty dollars, creating a new line item, zero one zero four nine zero, three three zero. Five hundred dollars into auto maintenance and repairs, zero one zero four nine zero four five four, a new line item. And another new line item, zero one zero four nine four, five seven four, auto purchase in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars. Uh, as you know, Alex had requested that we budget for this next year. However, the truck's available now. I talked to Mr. Derry myself last Tuesday. This one is there and it's in stock. It's not a police vehicle. It's a, a regular Chevrolet Silverado. And we could go ahead and buy it now rather than, uh, budgeting it next year. It's a vehicle that, uh, our need that he has now and, and, uh, if we could do it now rather than wait, I would recommend that we do.
I think that code should be four nine instead of four nine for auto purchases.
Obviously.
Oh.
Four oh nine.
It is four oh nine? Okay.
Not four ninety.
Never mind.
No, you're right. It says four ninety, but it should be four oh nine.
Okay, so the fuel and oil and auto purchase would be four oh nine. Okay.
All right, instead of four nine, it's four oh nine. Any twenty, am I right?
Yes, sir.
So the last one's right, the two in the middle are wrong. We're correct. Thank you all for catching that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook to approve. Any discussion?
It was there last Tuesday.
It was there last Tuesday and hopefully it's still there today. Hopefully he can find it. Who knows where it's at? Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. You want to say anything?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Number sixteen, consider approval of request by Mr. Dale Wilker, Harden County Airport Hawthorne Field FBO, authorize the county judge to sign amendment number two to the Texas Department of Transportation Airport Project Participation Agreement, two three two zero, K N T Z E, for improvements to the Harden County Airport Hawthorne Field, and consider approval to pay Texas Department of Transportation invoice in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and amend fiscal year twenty-four budget as follows. Decrease expenditures from oh one oh four oh one eight hundred contingency general in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Increase expenditures in line item zero one zero seven hundred, zero two two, transfers to airport fund in the same amount. Increase revenue in line item zero two two three ninety zero zero zero, transfers in general fund in the same amount. And increase expenditures by creating a new line item, zero two two six six four four oh two, engineering services in the same amount, seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Mr. Wilker, anything you want to add regarding that?
Accretion, this is, uh, based on a cost overrun, uh, where we had authorized the, uh, participation in the, in the airport improvement, capital improvement project. This portion of it was, uh, the planning and engineering, and the engineering costs had, had that much of an overrun, and they sent us a bill for that.
And the actual cost is seventy-two thousand, four hundred. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
With the county's portion being the seventy-two forty?
This is ten percent of the cost overrun.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cooper, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Uh, I think overall, uh, when we first started, we was given one amount and then throughout the process, things, uh, went up. And we, we thought we were gonna have one set amount for this and of course it went up, so this was what we owed them. And this is for the hydraulic study on the drainage portion of it out there. Is that correct?
And, and the planning of the completed project, which we were presented with at the auto meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Uh, I believe next court will bring, uh, the, the big project in for approval, but we needed this part out here to come up with exactly what we needed to do out there. Uh, and once all that came through, of course, everything was separate and this one up too. So they went back to the drawing board and actually brought some of the costs down, but, uh, this work had already been done, so I was moved that, uh, we approved this.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook to approve as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Wilker. Seventeen, consider request by Commissioner Cook to adopt resolution twenty-one dash twenty-four, authorizing and approving execution of an agreement with Cadence Equipment Finance, a division of Cadence Bank to finance a two thousand and twenty-four Kubota M S, I'm sorry, M six S one 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 S H D C four-wheel-drive tractor equipped with a Terrain King KB twenty-two, twenty-foot, twenty-two-foot boom mower for the R and B Ford Department as approved in Commissioners Court on June twenty-fifth.
Overproved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eighteen, consider acceptance of the audited financial statements for the year ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three for Harden County Emergency Services District Number One. Mrs. Gore, have you had a chance to review them?
Yes, sir. Everything's in order.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? I think we're still lacking a couple of these E S D financial statements. I know, uh, a few of them have contacted me to let me know that their auditors are running behind. We're running into that ourselves with our own audit. Uh, but they are working on them and they can, they will get them to us. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nineteen is a budget workshop. Workshop with elected and appointed officials to discuss any and all fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five proposed budget expenditures, including salaries, fringe benefits, retirement rate, longevity pain, and operation expenses. We do have one special request that we want to talk about today. That's from the county attorney. We have a, uh, submittal here from him. And it looks like an increase in wages for two people. Uh, one of those is the, uh, legal secretary for pre-trial diversion. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And the other one's also a pre-trial diversion legal secretary?
She's just a legal secretary. She's not a, she's not under the pre-trial diversion umbrella really yet.
Okay.
If you approve this, then she would be getting some funds from pre-trial diversion.
So go ahead.
So essentially, um, when we took on the Senate Bill twenty-two money, I made Kalea pretty much a full-time back, and so she's added a lot of new tasks to her responsibility.
What's the value?
Victim assistance court. So she does, yeah, so she does a lot of additional tasks for my office, and so because of that, I've had to move some pre-trial duties from Kalea to Talisha and to Kelly. And so based upon that, um, I am requesting from our pre-trial revenue that we receive for the program that we run in our office to use some of those funds to give them a little increase due to the tasks that they've taken on. And so it's basically two thousand annually for each of them for doing those tasks. And that would not come from the general fund. That would come from my budget that I receive for pre-trial diversion revenue.
And no problem bringing in enough revenue to cover that, I'm sure.
We have plenty enough for the next year. Our, our budget has decreased significantly, but it's, our expenditures for this year is gonna decrease significantly because of Kalea's pay coming now from the backside of the Senate Bill twenty-two. So our pre-trial diversion budget is gonna be significantly lower. I would say around twenty thousand dollars lower than it was in last budget.
Even with this four thousand offset? That's what you're looking at?
I would say, we've been working on the numbers for the last few days, so I, I still think it's gonna be around twenty less, twenty thousand less.
Unless it equates to just under a dollar an hour increase for each of those employees? Anything else you want to add?
That's it.
Any questions from the court? Does anybody have a problem including that in the proposed budget? I'll get it included. Actually, uh, Candace will get that, help me get that included because I don't touch those.
Thank you.
For obvious reasons. Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Thank you all.
Speaking of Candace, she has done quite a bit of work over the past, uh, five to seven days. And she has most, maybe not a hundred percent, but what, about ninety-seven percent of all of the salaries and fringes are entered to date. Uh, I just printed out a few worksheets for me to review this morning. I also have the, uh, actual budget ready to pull up. If anybody wants to look at any particular budget, I can pull that up and show it on the screen. Uh, just looking at the Roden Bridge Department, because it's a lot smaller, so they were printing the whole thing out. Looking at the total increases of expenditures for all four Roden Bridge departments plus the general Roden Bridge, uh, worksheet that we have here. The increase from twenty-four to twenty-five, this includes all the salaries and, and fringes with a three percent increase, the longevity pay. Also, the increase in health insurance at roughly five percent. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And a few other changes that we made in Roden Bridge. The total increase is gonna be a hundred ninety thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-five. I believe that with the, uh, increase in property values, and I also have several other increases that I've already looked at making for, uh, this other general revenue line items such as the, uh, license fees that come into the Roden Bridge budget. Each of the J P traffic fines, there's a few increases and a few decreases with an overall increase there of about three thousand. Altogether, I think that we can increase the revenue other than at Valorm at eighty-three thousand. And then I believe with the increase in property values, once we get a tax rate and see how that figures in, I don't think we'll have any problem covering the hundred ninety thousand extra. Anything that y'all want to discuss there regarding Roden Bridge? Any questions about that that I might be able to answer or at least have?
I know it's a whole separate, uh, budget, but as far as the lateral road funds, when, when does that money come in?
I don't, I don't know the month that it comes in.
I mean, when, when we, when he's figuring it into the budget, we get them yearly. He goes ahead and figures it even though they have not come in?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, it's estimated, but I don't know what time of year it comes in, but it's one payment.
And split evenly among all four of them, right?
I did notice that it was lower than the share than they asked.
The amount?
Not that I'm aware of.
Based off of, y'all know?
I, I don't really know. Y'all might have knowledge of that, but I think it has, I think it has something to do with that angle road reporting that I don't know that for a fact. Are those federal or state funds?
It comes as a mistake, but it may originate after.
Right, yeah.
Well, all right. I knew you'd ask me something I wasn't ready for. On the general fund, I just printed one little worksheet here. It's quite a bit of an increase, more than I thought it would be. Of course, uh, we'll take the forty-eight thousand out for the truck. But before taking that out, it's nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand increase, uh, with all of the additional items that we've added. And it hasn't been a whole lot of operational items that we added. Most of this is salary fringes and then that five percent increase in health insurance. We're leaving the retirement rate the same, um, which is fifteen point thirty-one. Is that right? Candace, right offhand. The required rate is only like eleven point two seven, but we leave that fifteen point thirty-one to try to help off, offset the unfunded liability that we have. We could look at lowering that if we wanted to, but, um, I wouldn't recommend it. Uh, once again, I have not touched any of the, uh, revenue line items that are other than I had at Valorm like I have in Roden Bridge. It's easy to do that in Roden Bridge. It's, uh, not quite as easy in the, in the general fund. But we will have some items there. One of them that I can think of right off the bat is the interest line item that we get from the, the bank and the, uh, the money that we have in, uh, Tex School and in the money market account. Uh, we collected quite a bit more interest than we budgeted for last year, so I can increase that some. I still think we won't have any problem offsetting this large increase. It's gonna be tight. I have to look at some other, uh, cuts to make that I didn't look at the first two times around that I've gone through this budget. But, uh, I still think there won't be any problem funding that. Again, we don't know exactly what the, uh, tax rate is gonna be, so it's hard to see what the, at Valorm revenue is going to be, but with the, uh, property values going up, I still think we'll be able to offset it. And I'll be working on that. I was hoping to have a draft budget ready for everybody, and Candace worked very hard to make sure that I had one, but with everything going on yesterday, I just didn't even have time to look, to, to look at it.
Well, we filed, like, proposed by next, uh, court.
I don't have a draft ready for you at the next court on the twenty-third, but we won't have our rates from the, or our, uh, certified values from the appraisal district until the twenty-fifth, so I'm looking at a special meeting the following Tuesday. Which will be July the thirtieth. Will anybody be available?
I'll be out.
You'll be out. But, uh, you'll be here? When, uh, when exactly are we even doing that?
Twenty-seven.
Okay.
Thirty-fourth.
Well, if we get those values on the twenty-fifth, it takes surely then two or three days to do what they have to do to give us our, our rates, so we couldn't have a special meeting before the twenty-seventh. But I'll have the information to you. We can talk about that before then.
All right.
I, I hope to have the, uh, I will have a proposal budget filed by the thirty-first, thirtieth or thirty-first. And then, uh, that will keep us on track to have our hearings that we have to have in the month of August. And then hopefully file a, uh, an adopted budget at the last meeting in August, which I think is the twenty-seventh, if I'm not mistaken. I don't have a calendar in front of me, but whatever the fourth Tuesday in August is, we should file an adopted budget on that day. Is there anything y'all want to look at or talk about, or anybody else here that wants to talk about anything regarding the twenty-five budget? Sheriff, there's one thing that we talked about two weeks ago in, in your budget for next year, and that's regarding the lateral transfers that you were talking about, bringing people in from other departments. Uh, are you going to bring that up as an action item at the next meeting?
Can. Uh, I actually thought, I, I thought we'd already kind of handled that, but I can't.
Well, there's a consensus to do it for the next budget year, and so that's no problem, but I thought you were talking about, and, and it wasn't your idea, I want to say it might have been Chris's. I'm going ahead and doing it now, and so if, if you want to do it before fiscal year twenty-five and you want to bring it up as an action item at the next meeting.
I'm, I'm not implying to start anything until October one.
Okay.
So if that pleases the court, I'd rather just leave it and have a clean start, start on October.
Sounds good.
On October one.
Well, the consensus was to do that for up to an LE four or a CO four, starting October first. Is there any other discussion that, that y'all remember anyway? Is any other discussion on that?
If we did, correction?
Sure.
That's for corrections as well?
Yeah, corrections and all, right?
Yeah, we, I was on both of the proposals. Probably the corrections will very rarely if ever be taken advantage of because I just don't get that many jaders that come here with jail experience. They're almost all brand new to the profession. In fact, if I look back, I've only got, uh, I think one or two in the last four years that had county jail experience.
You know, before we, uh, before October first, we probably should go ahead and put that as an, as an action item so we get it in the minutes.
Okay.
Let's do that. Sometime, anytime before, uh, actually, I, I'd like to do it in August. That way, when we file the adopted budget August, the whatever date that, that is, we have that action item handled and it's clean.
The, uh, two weeks from today, I'll be in sheriff's conference and, and annual training conference, but I can have, um, Mark present that. I can have it ready for me to look at in two weeks.
Yep, so we could do it then on the twenty-third, or if you want to do it August, the, uh, thirteenth, we could do it then. Either, either day would be fine. So if you want to wait till you're back, that's fine, and if you want to have the chief handle that, that's fine too.
What was the, what was the final word on? And I, and I have, and I, I guess I can see this more as the proposed gets out there, but for my employees that are not going to be subject to the longevity, new longevity pay that returned, uh, that left and returned and had qualifying prior service, are we moving their longevity pay scale, for lack of a better word, our LE level or CO level? I had proposed and, and presented in mind to move them up appropriately wherever they would fall as if they were still here. And there wasn't but two or three of them, was that? Was that proved? Was that, it was in the numbers that I sent you?
There's two and it would be included in the twenty-five budget.
Yeah.
Anything you want to add to that?
No, we just need to know, like, what's the court's pleasure on how far up the scale we've been with that? Because he's talking about moving them back to the years of service that they already had coming in and not just a LE four or CO four.
Well, if they're telling.
That's only for longevity though, that's for nothing else.
Yeah, it's just for longevity pay. So it wouldn't change their LE four or anything higher than that.
But they don't get longevity pay.
Well, they don't get longevity pay.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, that is their longevity pay.
That is their longevity pay, so that's right.
Because your numbers aren't like the numbers we proposed.
So it was basically two employees have prior service because they started and then they terminated and came back. So we, what are we going to do for those employees that are already here? We talked about bringing people new in up to an LE four or CO four, but what about these employees right now?
So if I'm understanding right, that's two separate things. One of them is a, an employee with years of service with Harden County that's left and come back. They could go all the way up to the top if that's how many years they have, if it's with Harden County. But let's say you hire somebody in that's never worked at Harden County before and they're coming in from Jefferson County and they've got ten years of experience and you want to be able to hire them in at a three or a four, he, he would be able to do that. That's a whole separate item, right?
Correct.
Okay, and we've talked about.
Exactly.
Being in agreement to both.
And, and we're only talking to, of two employees, Catherine Williams and, and Blake Moore. The, there was a couple of other we thought was going to be in there, but they actually, um, they actually either retired or pulled money or had some other qualifying event that wouldn't make them eligible, so.
Yeah, does that answer that?
Yeah, yeah, I just need to know, you know, what the, what the, I guess consensus is on do we bring those employees up to whatever their level would be?
I would say that we would have to because we're doing it on longevity for.
For everybody.
For everybody.
And that is their longevity pay.
It's going to benefit them more because of, of the money, but because we did it over here, I think we would have to, so.
Second part of that question, Judge, is for those employees that are not on a multi-level pay step for longevity pay. It was my understanding that they would be included in the county's longevity pay program.
Yes, sir.
Lieutenant and above. Was that how it's going to be proposed and presented?
Uh, I have not looked at that in detail, I assume so, but let me ask you this. We set it up when we restructured to where there would be a never, there would never be, in other words, if you, if a new sheriff come in, a new chief deputy, we won't put Mark in there because he's got thirty-something years. Were this lieutenant going to be here for thirty years and a new, where he would make more when we restructured? Is that going to affect that?
Uh, I, I don't think it's going to affect that at all because, I mean, our salaries are set. There's two pay grades for lieutenant. And that's plus or minus five years. Lieutenant for captain, chief is one pay grade. That's what he makes, period. And, and so he would be rewarded for years of service, whereas if he came in first day on the job, yeah, that's his salary, but he's not going to have any longevity to go with it like, say, Mark has now while he's here. Um, and I, and I don't, we, we came to a consensus in the salary committee on that and, and that's what was presented here, but I just want to make for sure that, that didn't fall through the cracks for that unique set of employees that are not going to be on the longevity pay plan, but they don't have a pay scale, s- pay scale step through us before years of service, so we have one, plus or minus five years, so.
That's how we do it, right?
And that's how I proposed it in the numbers that I sent you, so, but I didn't do the longevity side on that one.
Whenever I get the, uh, draft ready to send to the commissioners, it'll go to all elected officials and department heads too. I'm going to try to look at it before we talk about it at the next meeting on the twenty-third.
Thank you.
And you won't be here. But Mark will handle it. Mark two. All right, anything else regarding the twenty-five budget that anybody would like to talk about, ask about? Anything at all? Candace, Sheriff, doing great. Thank you. Thank you for letting her do it.
She is. She's working very hard on it.
All weekend.
All weekend, all night.
What about July fourth? Did you work on it then too? And July fourth. Dead, Katie, thank you. Anybody else on the budget workshop? If not, we will end that. All right. One other line item, that's right, discussion. I was waiting on them to say adjourn, but surprised we didn't. Get the glasses back on. Number twenty, discussion on any other non-agenda item without taking action, including reports from elected officials or department heads or announcements which may be of interest to the public. One announcement that may be of interest to the public was I learned, uh, some time between eight and nine o'clock this morning that FEMA is, uh, they think it's too unsafe here to have the D R C open, so the D R C is closed. And I don't know when it will reopen. It might be tomorrow, it might be another day, but because of the storm that came through here yesterday, we're out here working yesterday and today. Uh, they think it's not safe enough, so one of these days they'll decide it is and they'll come back and I'll let everybody know when it's back open. And that's everybody, not just FEMA, the S B A's not here and, and, uh, there's nobody here at the D R C. Right, Natasha? And then, uh, as far as the storm goes, tropical storm Barrel, Barrel through here yesterday, um, no, I don't think it was any worse than the storms that we dealt with between April and May. Do y'all agree?
I agree.
Sheriff, you agree?
I agree.
We have some damages. There's some, there's probably quite a few trees down. I think, uh, you had four.
About seven.
Seven in your precinct. Uh, several all over the county, a lot of them on textile highways. They've all been cleared off. The roads and the highways are back open. I know there's three homes that got trees on them. I'm sure hate to see that. There's probably more that we don't know about, but, uh, no report of any injuries, Sheriff.
No.
So thank goodness for that and, uh, we'll, uh, get it cleaned up and go back to normal, just like, uh, we have many times since April the eighth. Uh, a lot of power is still out. I think around thirty-eight hundred and seven. That's Entergy and Chico. Uh, Chico's about fifteen ninety of that, Entergy's the rest. I know they're working hard to get it back up and running. Entergy's going to have a conference call today about eleven-thirty. Aaron, if you're available, we'll, we'll do that in my office. Anything I learned from that, I'll be sure and pass it on to everybody. Anything else that anybody wants to add about Barrel or Burl? Have you spoke to say it? All right, any other announcements or discussion items that y'all want to bring up? Anybody at all?
Now. Leave to adjourn.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young, that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.
Mark.